Okay, let's call this policy meeting to order. We'll start with the first.
So folks, this is our first policy meeting of the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So we're excited that everyone is here and that we have um uh this opportunity before us. Want to give folks a little bit of uh history of how this worked last year. It doesn't mean it has to replicate it this year, but kind of what we did was we um. Would bring the policies together, just as you've seen tonight. We give the board and the committee an option to see the various language strikeouts. Uh, the bracketed areas are areas that board has ability to change. Um, and what what does the shaded areas mean again?
That's a new word.
New wording, new wording is the shaded area from from these policies. Uh, it's generally a very collaborative effort. We kind of go around the room. We talk to people, let everybody have the uh opportunity to chime in and. Give their input. Then um we make a recommendation to the whole board. Last year with what was the committee's um decision with the whole board seated here. Um, I'm gonna assume that once this committee makes a recommendation, the board is going to be able to move forward on it fairly quickly. So uh. Last year, we had Trish chair the committee. Trish is happy to do it again this year, or we can have somebody else do it, whatever anybody wants. Um, and we're gonna just go through the policies step by step. So questions about that? Yes.
Before we get started on policy, I just wanted to, with the board's permission. I wanted to add an agenda item six point five, just for a board reports and back or concern section.
Board reports, special concerns, six point five. Need a motion in a second from the board.
A second.
Um, second, is there any discussion? You're in on on it. I'm sorry, I didn't quite get that Gary, can you repeat?
I moved that we have if we on agenda, we have six point five board reports and special concerns.
That was seconded by Nathan.
Yes.
Member Smith?
Yes.
Member Dipdaw?
Yes.
Member Sable?
Yes.
Member Richardson?
Yes.
Member Brownout?
Yes.
Member Wilkins?
Yes.
Member Schmidt?
Yes. Do we want? Does anybody want to chair the committee? Anybody have a nomination for chair of the committee? Any other nominations? Chair of the committee.
Congratulations.
All right.
You want to gavel?
No. Really, I'm just the facilitator. I just it's help us move along. And so we'll go to the um. That's okay. Okay, um IGVHD program exemptions, which you have in your package, you flip the pages. What Tanya has organized for us tonight is the first um page is what is currently our board policy. What the second page is, is OSBA model sample policy. And um on this particular board uh policy, we worked on this at our last policy committee in May. Um, timing wise, it got it was on uh July agenda for approval, but we thought um. We would postpone it until the new board got their feet under them and got into this, so. It was taken off the agenda to although the policy committee did work on it, so the the third page is what the policy committee. Recommended and that you see before you. And so. I think our goal tonight was just to see if there was any question, there are any changes to the third to the third. The thing that we worked on um, so we could take it forward for board action.
There's point of clarification. So the copy with the highlighted is what came from the policy board as a recommendation.
Correct, okay.
Policy committee.
And the blue strike crews are what OSBA is suggesting?
We're gonna have to refer back to the OSBA policy page and um we decided not to. We just, we took out the board and the shall and we did the district may excuse. And so those were.
So words in brackets are words that the policy committee can make decisions on. So the policy committee in May chose May. But I know in July, folks were interested in the word shall.
Yeah, member Schmidt here, um certainly I have concerns about the word may versus shall. Uh, I think that when you come with issues of religion and disability, that um. There should be no wiggle room there whatsoever. It should be the district shall excuse students from the state required program. Uh, that's my feeling about it.
I remember it was uh Debbie that kind of questioned that and I. Kind of felt a little long that way too that. I don't know, there was just a question about maybe. How that can get uh perverted for right, you know. Uh, sorry about the use of that term, but like, just like somebody could say, I have this religion and it's like to some crazy thing or something. I don't know if that's a possibility. And then we're having to. Excuse somebody for something that's completely unreasonable. So and you've had comments on the the.
Well, I guess, you know, I. Have friends with. Religious beliefs that I don't think. Good, know that, yes, they have. Absolutely a freedom to believe what they want and a freedom to tell their their child what they believe. Um, I think back to a time when our son was taking a health class and there were things in that that I wasn't sure I wanted him. Learning, so to speak, but when I met with um administration on that and the teacher who was going to be teaching that. You know, it's it's very clear, the teacher believes strongly in in what was being presented for um. Reasonable reason and really felt that it was my duty as a parent to explain to our child. What an alternative view would be um. And so the other thought that came to mind was um, and I meant to look it up, but I didn't, the famous um lawsuit back in the. Forties or fifties about evolution. And um, you know, there are our religious beliefs that don't believe in in evolution and um. They include, you know, thinking our history really began seven thousand years ago and not seven million years ago or whatever. And so. I don't want. I don't think it's reasonable to ask the school district to. Teach a child something that is. Not um. Not. That we can, that isn't proven and is just a matter of faith. And I say just a matter of faith, it's important for that family, but um. I think when you say schal. It kind of negates the rest of the. Um, paragraph for me, it makes it sound like. You, the school district has to excuse students. Um, and then. If a parent can't come up with a in writing uh reason. And a proposed alternative that is acceptable. It sets us up for um conflict, in my opinion, so. I. You know, part of it's a matter of trust, I think that the school district will give any reasonable um. Accommodation um possible and would think long and hard be saying absolutely not. But I want. That may instead of shall so that. If it's totally off the wall. Um. We have. That may instead of shall. And I don't know if the administration has had any kind of difficulty in this um area or not. I'd be interested in hearing what. Has been past experience.
Yeah, member stable, I'm I'm curious to hear as to why um. May would be beneficial to the district, but but I was kind of curious, I wanted to ask for clarification because I'm trying to understand your position. With with the example that you gave. Um, I think he said something about um. Evolution. So so would your concern be that if there is a scientific principle being taught that's against somebody's religion? And the parents tried to exempt the child? That would be a problem is that? That you would see that as a as an issue that their.
I think it is.
Kids could.
Think of it as a possible problem, so I'm, I guess, at this point, so I'm asking administration their advice and. Thoughts on.
Can I ask them clarifying questions to make sure? What I thought I heard you say is, when you have the word shall. You worry if the word shall is there, then the requests that come after it, even if the requests don't fulfill the letter of all of this. We would still be held to have to to excuse them, is that what?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I understood you correctly. What, and and if the word may is there, then dependent upon the bottom part, depending on the problem, okay, just making sure I was.
Yeah, so. I don't know if I can agree with that. If the may part is there. The the parent or the advanced paid admirer still has to have a course study which the district. Says fulfills your requirement. If it doesn't fulfill the requirement. Maybe there's conflict, but not really. The only thing that happens is the district says, no, that doesn't fulfill the requirement. You may not graduate because you're not going to give this credit. But we're not. We gave them the opportunity, they didn't succeed in fulfilling the additional or the alternate requirement. But it's in terms of may versus shall. If you put may in, all the power goes to the district, and shall in, the power goes to the parent. At this point in time, I mean, the arguments you used about if you say shall. It eyes the district hands, but if you use may, it ties the parents' needs, so we're gonna tie somebody's hands. The question is, who's? And in this case. I'm gonna advocate that. The policy gives as much freedom and choice to the parents as possible, puts the district in minority position.
This is Schmidt, um, oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I don't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, go ahead.
Okay, uh, a couple of things I want to, I I'd like to share on that. I think um two things, one is um Debbie referring to this uh. Uh, this faculty and staff and administration, and I appreciate that, I have tremendous respect for what for for them, for what I've seen. But uh faculty and staff and administration don't always stay the same, they're they're an evolving group. Um, so who knows what the next group is going to feel or the next person or the next faculty member is going to feel when they're offering a specific curriculum. Uh, the second thing is, this policy is uh written. In the context of assisting parents and assisting families, or it wouldn't be in there to begin with, it's talking about excusing the students, not support, not um. Uh, allowing the teachers to do what they wish, or the faculty to do what they wish, or the administration to do what they wish. Uh, it's really geared towards the parents uh and the students, so I think that uh that it ought to be uh supportive, as Gary was saying. Uh, for the will, more supportive on the side of the parent than it is uh on the side of a larger group that uh, you know, doesn't live with the child at home. Uh, the third thing I want to say, this really comes out of uh, you know, modern issues that we're dealing with in health curriculums more than anything else. Uh, whether it's gender issues or whether it's um uh, you know. Sex education, whatever you want to call it. Uh, parents should have the right, that that's that's where the real controversy is in this day and age, and we need to not. Uh, hide from that, we need to be willing to address that. And when it comes to religion, or when it comes to disability, the parent should have the final say in those topics, is my opinion.
This is member Dipdaw. I just want to highlight something for all of us to be thinking about, hopefully at all times that. These are not the school district's children, these are the children that belong to these parents that would be presenting this exemption. Um, and I certainly would hope that we always think about that whenever we pass a policy that. We are not the parent, we are not the ones ultimately responsible to God or whoever you might think to raise those children, so I will. Almost always err on the side of the parents versus the school district when it comes to something of this nature. Um, and I think Gary highlighted that very, very well, um, as did Joe, but uh for me, it's. Not a question in terms of may versus shall, I think it's always. Our job to err on the side of the parents when it comes to a choice, uh especially related to. Things as significant as religion, disability, and other individual freedoms.
So can I ask a a clarifying question, because I may be reading the policy wrong, I see it as as two parts. First part is whether or not the activity will be excused, and that's a may or shall question. Um, and then the second part is whether or not there's credit arrived from it or not, and I don't see that may or shall. Changes the second part of the policy, that's still is something that the district is supposed to determine whether or not the alternative assignment. Meets credit, you know, am I reading that correctly?
Sorry.
Well, and I was just gonna, so. We have this policy now, we have this practice now, and we do have. Parents who request exemption from, mostly from the sex ed unit, um, and we always respect that and honor that. Um, at high school, because it is a requirement for graduation to earn that health credit. They do have to propose to us an alternative learning activity, and we have to determine if that. Learning activity, whatever they provide to us uh warrants um credit. Um, for passing that unit. Um, it always has, and so that has never been an issue, but it, I see it like you see it as well. We've always accepted that what the parents' request is. Uh, the alternative activity is the sticking point and where. They have to do something to meet those standards, and then we determine if what they've done warrants uh being issued to credit.
With that in mind, do you see any reason why? Uh, changing the verbiage to shall affects that at all? Because I do think it it goes back to what Joe had mentioned, that. It has everything to do with who is in the position of authority to make that decision, and that's why policy is so important, that it. Ties someone's hands and depending on who's in authority, and you all have done a fantastic job for years, and I appreciate that, but. It it does put the onus on the person that's in the position of authority. Does that change things in your mind, you seeing those two? Or for anybody that was involved in writing of what we have in front of us now?
Yeah, I, for me personally, it's semantics. Um, I still look at it from, like we all do. Parents have a lot of rights in our district, and we honor those rights whenever they come forth to us and want to work and work with us, so. We wouldn't treat it any differently than what our current practice is, may or shall is a semantics thing, in my opinion. I may not be representing other people's opinions, but that is my.
Well, for us, the may and shall, not outside of this policy, it may and shall is going to come on the line. It's always been more about. It is impossible to anticipate every eventuality and any, every scenario is and shall. Just allows us to not be locked into this thing that no one ever anticipated, and now we're like, oh, shoot. So that's, it's, again, that's not specific to this policy, that has been um our. The past practice.
I I remember stable, so I'm. You know, I tend to err on the side of. Uh, parents being as involved, they didn't have as much power over their kids as they can, but I'm still trying to understand why the recommendation was to. Go to may. As opposed to shall, do you have that background on that?
Well, it really is, just. Yeah, but she said. Said chef instead of me.
Oh, did I say it backwards?
Okay, so so may, right, made just allows us wiggle room and eventuality. So I do want to say something here, and I think this is important, uh. This committee is going to make a recommendation to the board, and again, the board is here and I understand that. But I don't want to put us in a situation where the board is saying. Making a motion, seconding it and saying shall is it, because then that constitutes a first reading. I would recommend that we say we're presenting to the board as shall. Right, because that tends to be the weight of the room, as I'm seeing it play out right now. That way, when we present it in the board packet and people start looking at it. They can look at it before there's an actual first reading, and then they can make comments to the board and allows the board to. Hear from lots of different people. If we make it a motion tonight, a second and pass it. Which can be done, you then cut out the constituents that you're saying you want to hear from, so I want to make sure that we don't. Leapfrog anything in this and and they, all we're doing is first reading in. October and a second reading in November, it'll be the law of the land.
So when it came in July, it was coming as a recommendation from the committee. Then, so are we saying, are we are we rewinding the tape and saying, no, this is the real recommendation from the committee as opposed to a first read?
That group decided with four new board members coming in that they were not giving it. They were not going to vote on it, that board was not going to vote on it, and they left it to you, so this really is. This can, this is, yes, we're, we are starting at ground zero with this policy right now.
Remember, Nathan, we kicked it back.
Yeah, that's right.
You send it back. And now we're here.
So we're at, yes, we're at the starting.
And I just want to maybe clarify my concern. In general, I'm I'm on the side of, you know. I guess tying the district's hands, and I'm the side of not tying the parents' hands in general. Um, but I just know similarly, like sometimes this language, and and when you do that, you're just. Someone's gonna manipulate that little thing, and I don't know if there's been a time when the district has said.
On other policies.
That's a crazy request.
Okay.
Is, has anybody ever said, that's a crazy request? And we're not honoring it because it's not reasonable, I mean, it's not. Yeah, I don't know if that's ever been a case.
Well, but but we can say what your assignment you're offering in replace of does not meet the standards, and we're not accepting that. We do allow you to to opt out of what we're teaching, but we will. Say, no, we're gonna have to work a little harder with you on what you're.
Generally, it's no different than a parent keeping their kid home and calling it a sick day or whatever, I mean, yeah, so it's the same. And that was really my only concern, it's just the idea of. You know, just making sure that there's not a. Policy being made that's that becomes, you know, weaponized in some way where people like, oh, I'm just gonna use this and kind of like, you know.
You never.
Get out, get out studying this program and that class and.
Right. I think absolutes can always be problematic, but I think when it comes to the specific policy, it seems crazy to me that the district would ever try to. Say no to anything religious. Or a disability or whatever else might be deemed appropriate, like that seems like you're setting yourself up for a problem. Um, and so for that reason as well, I would suggest shall makes a lot more sense.
Well, and, you know, in the past, I've always been an advocate for um. Making options available and. Bringing full notice to things like. Um, sex education and and health requirements, um. I guess I don't like unintended con- consequences, um, and so I tend to heavily go towards the may instead of shall. Um, and the name of the trial I was thinking of was um. The state of Tennessee versus John Thomas Scopes, commonly referred to as the Scopes Monkey Trial.
Right, yes.
And that was in, actually nineteen twenty-five.
It was so close.
When Scopes was accused of violating Tennessee's Butler Act, which had made it illegal for teachers to teach human evolution in any state funded school. Um, and it was a religious um. Yeah. Controversy.
Thanks for that, I, yeah, I don't even worry about that, my my question was, I was trying to, because you brought that up as an example, so I was trying to understand. Is your concern with this, that if. You know, if hypothetically a parent says, I don't want my kids to learn. Some scientific principle because it's against our religion, that they would have the ability to not have their child exposed to that thing. So, so it's like, here's the science. We don't care if your religion is against it, you're gonna learn this, is that, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's more along the lines of. And maybe I'm blowing this up a little bit, it's more along the lines of the second paragraph where. They bring up, the parents bring a concern that. They kind of. Had a written um reason, and they've got this um. Curriculum that they're bringing forward to replace it. And for instance, it's maybe what the Butler Act wanted instead of um what is accepted kind of. For women in public schools. Um. Does that shall in the first paragraph? Dictate that we have to accept whatever they bring forward, and you're saying, no, it doesn't. So then my other question is, is it going to, would it open the possibility to? Um, a parent saying, well, you're lying because it says shall up here. And here's my curriculum that was. Approved by Tennessee for all these years, why can't I that replace what my child was learning? And maybe I'm just stretching it and and but. I like to be.
It says the district will determine, so shall it. Shall. We change that to the district shall. Because actually, the way it read. The plain English says the district gets to determine whether credit. Doesn't anything.
So we changed first one to shall and second will and the will to shall and.
Did you ever help deal with contractors or change old wills to shall?
I was a contractor.
We did, so. Give us straw vote and two were around, we're okay with shall and shall in there.
Sure, um, I do want that to work, the.
Are we ready to move ahead?
I'm fine with the word will, oh, it's fine that it is, right? Will is the same, yeah, you will do this, you shall do this, fine.
So the, I think what Tim's asking for is a straw vote with thumbs up, good with it? I, or Danny, you know this better than I do.
Thumbs up is, I like this suggestion and I can support it. Um, sideways is, I can support it, I have some questions, thumbs down is, I really don't like this suggestion and.
And so it's a consent. What does Joe do over there?
And the suggestion?
The question I'd like.
Paper scissors. This is just the first word.
So shall. This, this, this.
So votes. The first one's a shall and the will is a shall. I don't think.
The first line, the district shall excuse.
Very good.
Yeah, we're gonna keep the district shall excuse, straw vote.
Yeah.
Where's the thumbs? I see thumbs, 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 thumbs. Anything else changing in this?
Anything else changing in this one?
Can't, you can't leave until I get to talk about scope's monkey trial.
Cassie, what was, what was the outcome of that, Cassie? I couldn't see it quite uh.
It's without tallying. Completely, I think it was thumbs up.
Okay.
Thumbs ups and so Mike in love with it. I didn't think I saw any thumbs down.
Okay.
I was kind of neutral.
So it is the committee's recommendation that we send this to the board on show.
And no other changes other than that one?
Yes, we will come back to the scope.
You have all heard me talk about the half life of the fact. So it, the scope's monkey trial, all of the facts on the evolutionary lies. Are completely. Show you state vintage credit and. Just one of those. Interesting things that's happened over time. The facts of nineteen twenty five are not the same as the facts in twenty twenty three.
That's, that's exactly right.
But there are still people who have religious beliefs that coordinate with the Butler Act.
That is true.
And so. That's. I'm just trying to avoid an unnecessary. Unintended consequence. And you're all assuring me that. I'm being silly, so.
I don't know, I don't think you're being silly, I, you know, for me. If if there is a committee put together and discuss this thoroughly and decided, you know what, we need to change this word from shall to may. There must be some reason for that, so that that's what I wanna hear, what was the problem being caused caused by shall? Okay, so it's semantics.
Going to the board for vote.
I really would wish you would not. You certainly can, but we would present this in the board packet as show. This will allow the community to look at it and offer the board. Allow the community an opportunity to look at the board packet and offer comment at the next board meeting.
They keep more public instead of instead of less public, more transparent.
Okay, but if we're still talking about this this time next year, you owe me lunch.
I will buy you all.
Conversation when it comes around again. Remember we talked about it.
I think it's gonna pass pretty quickly with the board. If it doesn't, I'm blaming you because you ended up working behind the scenes to make sure everybody's a shout, it's okay.
Jason, quickly to answer your question. We'll have to go back and look at the rationale as to why they OSBA brought it back up. There, there's a law changer or something, there's a rationale.
But obviously there's wiggle room, so it wasn't like.
For example, on the next policy. In your packet, if you look at expulsion, the first set of expulsion one is our government language. If you turn to the OSBA model sample policy, this comes to us in what's uh and Tanya is gonna update you some more. I think about OSBA updates that are coming. OSBA puts together model sample policies and you can see at the top of this expulsion one, when it came to us in the spring of last year. It came as a required policy based on those two laws that we were required to make some changes. So we brought that forward to the policy committee. And we, so if you keep going past the OSBA sample policy. You'll get to what was recommended in the spring of last year. As our um. Expulsion policy that we were taking for that first reading, public comment. Um, so Danny has lots of information on expulsion since he was the expulsion guy for years and. We just wanna look at the words that we've changed and highlight. And any other comments that need to be made. You have any questions about any of the changes? You wanna go through them one by one? Do you have thoughts on other changes that need to be made?
So just. For clarification, member saver, so. So the change was already made. The current policy, the decision was made to. Put expulsions in the superintendent's lab as opposed to the board, because it looked like.
Well, that's where they've been, yeah. The board wasn't the hearings office, but the. Or designated superintendent to select a hearings officer.
So that, right, so that was made, and so unless somebody appeals that, then they may be able to appeal it to the board to correct.
Yes, they could appeal it to for a board review.
As a hearings officer, then the only appeal after that is the OD.
The changes are are really about how uh. Some of the changes to the law, the the law says you can only be expelled for those three things. The law says you can, when you're a. First through fifth grader, the only thing you can be expelled for are. Direct threats as opposed to a kind of a global type of threat, so they're. They're narrowing the scope of what a student can or cannot be expelled for. That's what those changes were.
And those are law mandated.
Correct. The others are um. It is, it, they're. In lockstep with what our practice has been in terms of when recommendations for expulsion is made. And it's not waived, there's certain procedures that have to be followed and those are prescribed in the law and. And so those are why those procedures are listed there. It changed just slightly about um. If they have difficulty understanding English versus they don't understand English, we have to provide an interpreter for those particular hearings. It clarified who can be a representative at the hearing. It can be not only the parent guardian, but it could be any other person that they chose to have, including a. Counsel so forth, so. Those were the yellow highlighted main changes in those particulars, and we have been doing those for the last. Decade, so it doesn't change the practice that we've had for expulsion. So. Even the um very last one, the board conducted hearing. Um, as Ryan knows, there's a wonderful script that was put together that we read in a hearing and we talk about whether they want the. Hearing to be open or public and if it's. If it's pub, closed or.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, open same, closed republic, and if it's closed, we say you can't do those four things, cannot be made public and so forth and so on. So. And we do, at the time, you're making a recommendation for expulsion, the principals have to notify parents, hey, here's the two alternatives that are. Possible, because part of the law says. You can change somebody's educational placement, but they have to have a choice between at least two alternatives for. Uh, replacement if you do expel them, so. So those changes are just to keep us in compliance with what what the law says and.
Go to the third from the yellow.
And if anybody's really, really bored, actually brought the. ORSs that they talked about and. If you wanna read them.
I have the copy of what we were going to.
The fire summarizes, this is now in compliance. But uh also. Pretty much what we've been doing as far as the procedural stuff.
Correct.
And except for where it's limiting those definitions.
Correct.
This is how we're. Doing all of this already.
Right. Yes. Like, for instance, back in the day, hypothetically, an elementary student could have been expelled for stealing lots of. Stealing lots of stuff isn't one of the things that's listed in.
And a student using drugs, marijuana, et cetera. Um, is posing a threat to themselves.
Student may be expelled expelled for. Using, possessing, distributing certain. Yeah.
Well, if a section. When required by law.
That's a weapon.
Right, so. There's other stuff that's not listed here that's covered by when required by law.
Yes. Susan, a question directly related to the the writing of the policy or or modifications, but I'm just curious how does. Uh, this on the first page. Went to under the use of expulsion for discipline of a student in fifth grade or lower is limited to. Uh, when the student's conduct poses a direct threat, how does that change? Current practice? Do you have an example of that or maybe hypothetical even? I'm gonna shoot up the school. Versus I'm gonna shoot chat. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kill somebody versus I'm going to kill you. So shooting up those schools is not a direct. Eh, I may backtrack on that a little bit. I I I'm just trying to understand. It's more, i- it's it's like a kindergartner can't say. Something. Just like I said, I'm gonna kill somebody. I mean, you know, it has to be a more direct threat than. And by the way, they do say. I brandish it, unfortunately, we had had a case. Years ago, I brandished it, I'm actually brandished it in my another fifth grade. That's absolutely direct.
But just having a pocket knife is.
There any changes that you wanna make to what the recommendation is? Can this one go forward at the next board meeting to? First reading? Thumbs tied down.
Good.
So that finishes our five point O policies, we're gonna move on to the six point O requested policies for review. Um, each one of these policies, what Tanya has done in the um agenda lets you know when the. Policy was last updated. Um, there are a couple of corrections to make, but um first, starting with school counseling program. Um, it was last updated in twenty twenty two and I'll let Gary. Speak to you, you were the one who brought forward the request to review this policy.
Sure, um, school counseling program, um. I don't remember exactly the changes he did in twenty twenty two, but um. If we now cover academic career, social, emotional. Um, as to types of counseling we have. But we don't talk about um. How the parents get notified when that occurs, because academic counseling in the past. There was kind of this pers-. Just gonna say, nobody was really that interested, they just assumed that occurred. When you talk about social, emotional counseling. Where. Can be things like um. Suicides and those kinds of things, there've been some cases up north where. The kid was availing themselves of counselors at school, but the school didn't tell the parents, in fact, they got a name for that law. For the videos. But. The school knew that the student was struggling and talking about suicide, family never heard about it. I actually did commit suicide. And Oregon has some law. But anyway, the reason I want to bring this policy up is to see how we might change it, make sure that parents are notified. When students are availing themselves of the counseling programs if this trips out.
Nice to clarify a question. Are you talking about our school counselors or are meant for contracted options for mental health? Is there, I I just wanna make sure I'm understanding. Which one you're talking about?
So it's the conduit. Family doesn't really distinct. They take their kid to school. The school becomes, you know, the parent. The standard parent without a student or the primary at school. We send them to. Whatever little programs you were talking about that aren't necessarily, aren't necessarily for employees. The parents should still know that.
I just wanna make sure I understood what you're talking about.
So on page two of the policy, Gary, there's the both of the. Um, lines there refer to. Um, collaborating with the parent. And then the. The stuff that's protected as privileged communication by organ law for our counseling licenses. I know in in current practice, our. Uh, counselors, all of them, I guidance counselors, SEL counselors work to do exactly what it says in board policy to. Communicate, collaborate, let the parent know what's going on academically, socially, emotionally. Um, things that are happening in that kiddo's life. Um, oftentimes we're scheduling um meetings with parents, sometimes they come. Um, and sometimes they don't, um, so we make a lot of efforts uh to reach out to parents to kind of work with them on the issues that we're having. We've even been um doing a lot of home visits recently, trying to get parents to engage with us, so there there are a lot of. That attempt to collaborate with the student parent is our current practice um. And so I'm not sure how we would revise that to be strengthened, do you have?
Sure, and the easy one is just to strike the words as appropriate.
I'll just add that and for the outside resources, the options counselors that they're. They're seeing an options therapist, they are options, and that can't. All done with the family like they said. It's just not immediate and get the permission, options got the permission, we're just providing the place. Because it's easier to sit kids at school.
And if that wording is in place to protect. Individual rights, counselors obligations, professional, et cetera. Would something along the lines of the school counseling office will alert parents to counseling services being provided? Period. And collaborate with students, parents, guardians as appropriate. There's something to that, because that's the, that's the effect that you're suggesting, right, is that parents are alerted to not. Necessarily. Become aware of everything that is discussed.
Is that that they are. Right, right, so it's not necessarily content. It's just like they made a business. There, there's some of this stuff that's protected and privileged and like. So. But if a student left the classroom, went through this other thing, parents should know.
And I know at the high school, it's coded that way in their attendance. Like, they'll say counselor's office or.
Perfect question, so what happens right now if a child leaves the classroom? What what happens? What is, how is that tracked? Who's notified? Can you explain that to me? I don't know how that works.
High school, so let's say kids just go and do whatever. Crisis of manner, just having some emotional difficulties, I can go see my counselor. Um, they notify, they either send a hall pass or they'll call the counseling office, if it's more of a so more significant emergency. Um, they go down, they um ask to see their counselor. I would say we made some, there were some significant changes were made about two years ago that. There, we used to have a gateway to the counselors, beating the secretary, and we've eliminated that, and then. They, we never want to prevent a kid who may be the most extreme from seeing a counselor, they need to go see him. Uh, because otherwise work fault, right, uh, they didn't get services, they just see the area, so they immediately go back and see their counselor, if they're not in. They may say, can you, you wanna see somebody else or who, uh, let me write your name down, I'm gonna get to you soon as they get back. And they go and see the other, so, um, if it's anything less than just a five minute visit or anything more, excuse me, a five minute visit. Then like Trish or Vanessa uh mentioned there, uh entered as a C for counseling in the attendance. So if it's just a quick back and forth, they're not, they're not gonna code that, because that's no different than a halt, going to the bathroom, so. But if it's uh like, it could be a schedule change or, hey, you know, I just wanna let you know where my soccer game is. Um, but if it's something more than their escape or extended time, then it's a good one to powerful.
And the parents can see that. Pretty much immediately, but they have to go. They're not getting like a notification or anything. They would have to go look at the attendance portion of the. Correct.
But the teacher, that is the protocol that the teacher knows why the student is leaving.
The teacher knows that they're getting requests.
Yeah. So it's like.
Sounds a reading emotional, you know, like they're crying or like, oh, you need to go.
Um, but it but it's not currently tracked. So if someone says, well, I need to go, you know. Talk to my coach and get my pads. For practice. Or I need to go to the bathroom. Or I need to go to the counselor. So the specifics of leaving the classroom isn't. The the teacher isn't aware of that.
They they do need to notify why they're leaving. I need to go see my counselor because and teachers will inquire a little bit to make sure it's legitimate if they don't know the kid, you know, like are they just working me here because they're going to go visit with the parent? Sure, you know what I mean? They don't take it. So there is a little bit of inquiry there, but as long as it looks like a legitimate request.
And if they if they know the kids, they're gonna hit read between the lines and pick up on whatever they're. It's going on. So so then, so it is marked. Uh like a B for bathroom, C for counselor, just something like that.
There's that O for office. If it's an administrator, so administrator needs to interview a student or on the situation, uh C for counseling. Bathroom is just a whole pass.
Okay.
And so. That's.
And so when a parent looks at that. At their kid's attendance for the day. Is there a code where they can see that O is for office and not for outstanding?
There's a key.
Right.
It's not uncommon. Like I'll give an example. If there's an investigation, something that's more serious and a kid might be in office for more than an hour and maybe a couple hours before. There's gonna say O for a form period and it's gonna say O the next period. So. Uh, that's what the when secretaries are in conjunction with administration usually like, you mean mark them out? Oh, yeah, 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 you know, so they'll mark them out. So it's.
So so I get. An email if. Eli misses, you know, period. You know, Eli missed his second period class or whatever. Um, that's ever happened. Oh, it's happened.
No, it is a public thing that they got those calls. Well, yeah, good reasons.
Yeah, but uh. This, but is there? So how do parents see those codes? Is it? Do they? Would they have to call and ask? Or is there something that prompts them? Hey, parents, your your child has left the class. Several times. Is there anything that prompts parental review?
So obviously, we have the power school piece for parents. I'm sure a couple of you in here have logged in before and seen their kids' grades, attendance, all that. Um, the are there are the phone calls that take place. What I'd have to verify is if it's. I know C is considered excused. O is considered con- uh excuse. So I don't know that that would prompt a call.
Okay, so I guess what I'm wondering is like we're trying to get to what Gary is suggesting. If there was a trigger. Of some sort, like three long visits. To a counselor that the parent is notified, hey, your child is going to counselor. Not sure why. But. But they are so that if there's something going on with their child, that they'd be able to at least check in with them. Hey. Heard you've been going to the counselor through a lot of visits. What's going on? Something I can help you with. Is there something we can explore policy wise with with that? At least.
There a way to make that work? Moving back to the.
Could be a power school question.
I'm gonna say it's not really the policy.
It's procedural.
Yeah.
Right, but but to but to make sure it was happening, probably need to be.
Right, but I'm just saying the question really is more about. The.
We could look into one of my.
Technically. How the district influences. Right, real care.
Sure, sure. Well, we we want to micromanage Tim. What amazing word we're trying to say, but the word is again, it's the it's the balance of power.
I want the policy to say. Right, the district is gonna just notify. There's children in terms and their kids are leaving the classroom. So their parents will.
Yes, we do not some.
There's no reason that the district would ever not notify the parent. Because they thought it was appropriate. They not. Do that. Now. If. Uh. There's judicial bypass for if the student claims the parents can kill them as they go home. There's. That's a different deal. But when I'm talking about that, I'm talking about what does our policy say? And we're saying. That the district. Is letting families and parents know that they're gonna let their kid know when they leave their classroom. Well, that's a parent's expectation. Is the kid goes to the school, they're in the classroom. That the, you know. Elementary school, the classroom. And as you get to middle and high school, multiple classrooms. We don't expect them. Be doing these other things that they don't know about that they may want to talk to their child about. So we just want to make sure. Their policy emphasizes that parents will. Have the tools to know this happens. Let Helen. But we're saying we will certainly do it.
And it's you saying that if it if a parent has access and can look at have a C but didn't take the time to look it up, that's not sufficient?
No, I think that's sufficient. Yeah.
No. If they're not alerted to the fact. That they're like, I I think it. Well, don't let go of it, but I would suggest that. By putting the onus on the parent to check every day if their kid checked out of every single class that they had with a C, that's a lot when it would be. I don't know what that looks like again for the school to implement that, but. I I would suggest that's asking quite a bit of parents when it should be on the school's own is to let them know that they're visiting a counselor.
May may maybe it would be a lot, maybe it won't. You know, I'm just. I'm just thinking in terms, you know, obviously as a parent, most of us are probably parents. You know, if your child is in counseling, you know, lengthy counseling. Why? I want to know that pretty darn quick just to find out what's going on. Obviously.
If there's some really do a good job.
That was good. I just maybe I was interrupting you guys.
I'm sorry.
I started talking.
It's a lot bad.
No, you know, I. I'm I'm sure that there was some severe situation that child said, you know, my my parents might beat me or or kill me, something horrible like that. That discretion would. Uh make that a law enforcement check or a welfare check or something.
Correct.
That was that was, you know, in that situation. But. Anyway.
I think it would be great at power school. There's an option for power. We'll look into that.
Yeah.
With counseling, I don't know that there's an option for power school to say every time a student goes to the um. That that would probably be.
Quick timeout. Why don't we explain to folks what power school is? How everybody's going?
Oh, shit's good. Okay. Not everybody pointing at.
I went down the road. It's a student information system. You ought to give them.
Sure, power school is our student information system where we track demographics, course outcomes, attendance. Um, discipline. I mean, it's it's all the records of a student.
And a parent can access.
And a parent can access all those records.
Yes, and remind parents frequently about we will show them, call the office, we will show you how to sign up, what you informed.
I got locked out last year, but I got it.
Kind of in, you know, support what Gary's saying. If there was some automated way that the parents, even maybe the first lengthy visit. Where it could easily being, you know, I bet if you had a boat in town, probably ninety five or ninety nine percent score, that would be great to know. Of course, that's not scientific. I'm just saying it probably. So.
Gary, does this come as suggestions? For wording or just a discussion?
This is a discussion. We don't even necessarily have to change it, but I. This policy, I want to review. I stated the reason why I think. You should change the policy, mind you. It just. Maybe it certainly depends. It could be notified when students are doing wrong classroom things.
And we'll contact power school and see how we can make that work.
That.
We'll report back to the.
I was. Kind of, you know, trying to think that the C was enough and that sort of thing. But when you said that chat, I was thinking a little more about just kind of the. Requiring parents to access information like on a regular basis. It's like a, you know. Small administrative task and depending on your concern, how often you. Would have to do that and how many parents there are in the district. It's like. A lot, you know, to ask and we just wondered if there's something more simple, so.
Yeah, I like it.
Support that.
I try and look at it from two different angles. My my wife, who. Will be on power school daily. And will know everything that is happening. And myself would really like to know if my son was just in the counselor. But there's not a chance in Hades. I am going to be able to. Give the time to pay attention to that. And then knowing that there's a spectrum of individuals out there that. May or shall a majority want to know that, but there's a lot of people like that. Sorry, Gabby. I didn't mean to jump on.
My my, um, so. I don't know the current system. At one point, we had um. Notices the progress for a student go out every three weeks. Is that?
It doesn't, I think, do that because. Parents can look at it hourly. Yeah, as soon as it's great if it's on there.
Yeah.
And so a parent is only gonna, well, does a parent still get? Um. The report card. One, so.
Yes.
The.
It's kind of a living report card. Powers.
I mean, we have parents that will. Text their kid saying, I noticed you weren't in class last period. What's going on? Right, because they're. Yeah, because they're checking.
Right, right.
Right? So we would we do give them that power to do that, but we will see if there's a way that. We can automate. A chime to a parent's phone that. Student was out of class.
And a counselor.
It would, and will tell you it will not be a phone call. Because just the magnitude of that would be a couple of full time employees.
If any kind of push notification. May have.
Right.
The app or.
Correct.
Email. Or text, however that works.
These are basically two different things. One's how you do it.
Yeah, I understand.
And the other one is what does our policy say? I'm not sure.
Right, and we're trying to, yeah, and we're gonna look into see what we can do and give back information.
Do you want to do a straw poll on the concept of it?
See, I'm interested in what the counselors. If they think this would stifle. Um, as students. Access to those certain.
Well, the the C gets put on the.
Already.
Already. So it's just a matter of how do we let parents know that C is there?
I would just. Well, I'm I don't need to micromanage. We'll check in with us.
We will.
Check. I did that. One more question because the example that was given was for the high school. So is there a change being to know about junior high or? Elementary?
Our school's different for elementary. We don't have that access. It's primarily because of grades, because our grading system is completely different. Like things don't. It's just completely different. And so.
S's and O's and.
Different presentation, but it's it's not. It's not um. Responsive. It's not like grades are being interned all the time and, you know, it just doesn't work that way. Eating or eating, so.
But at the elementary level, we're pretty quick to inform parents what's going on.
I would assume, yeah.
There's. So to see a skills, uh, well, first of all, we don't have. Counselors like most school, high school, so we don't even have that. Um, but to see the. Like I said already, to see the options. Um, staff that you have to be an options client, so your your parents are just. You know. Um, to see the skills trainer that we pay for, but as an options client. If it's more than a, if a skill trainer is just in the classroom working with lots of kids, there's no parent. Permission, but if they're seeing the kid pulled out of the classroom in a group or individually, that's parent permission. So that already.
So I'm just recommending that one sentence be changed in some kind of way you can suggest language at a later date.
Very good.
Um. So just I'm clear. We're coming back with suggested language for that. But you want from us. Sure.
Somebody's got to make first damage.
Alright.
Um, next policy, IJA.
And you got.
So you include you.
About the administration.
Last updated two thousand four confidentiality confidentiality in counseling. Gary, you want to speak to that one?
Well, this is just to follow on to the other one. Um. I think it needs to be reviewed. The. There's no, now you're repeating myself. Just that the parents now. This is occurring. Um, some of the stuff that's listed here. Um, there's legal. Um. Or Oregon law related to confidentiality and stuff, so the parents aren't going to be told. What they talked about. But the fact that the student went. The parent shouldn't know about.
Gary.
Section four already says.
Funny you're saying that this does not exist. In OSBA policies.
Okay.
They pulled it because they said that a law speaks to confidentiality of counseling. Who is no longer an A OSB policy. I asked when they removed it and. They had no. Looking. Actually, she said Gary Richardson will want to know, when did you remove it?
Yeah, I want to know why it would be paid and they don't notice.
I think it's addressed back in the former policy, the last statement, consistent with individual rights and accounts with obligations of professional, the counseling relationship. And resulting information may be protected as privileged communication by Oregon law. And then cites the law. I think that's the. Why they deleted IJA. And incorporated it into the.
And actually, yeah.
Counseling.
So I'd suggest we. I think if there's or if there's a deal with it. Um, use our policy.
Here with the thumbs, we'll say.
Uh, the next one is um outside of your packet. It is the um, it's on the agenda is the next one. It's a JHH. It's an administrative rule. For suicide ideation, student suicide ideation, attempts, completions and prevention. So you have what you have before you in separate from the packet. Is um. The changes to the administrative rule. That. Uh. We are recommending. Um, we've done a lot of work on our suicide policy. We've updated um on our district website. Is our district plan? Uh, first, the um Senate bill that speaks to Addy's act speaks to our requirement to have a suicide prevention intervention and postvention. Plan is posted on the district website. So this AR has been updated to be in alignment with. The changes we made for that um. Requirement. This is just notification. That's changed. In the AR. I think Gary brought it forward for discussion.
You know, it's a small issue for me. If I could bring this up on number two, it it says contact the student's parent. Uh, just a small thing. It probably should say student, parent or guardian, right?
Yeah, we can make that change. Other issues or changes? Questions?
This is an AR.
What? I'm sorry, what? What'd you say?
I said I requested us to look at an AR.
On. Or them, I mean, you guys.
That's. Oh, I understand it, right?
If I did, that was.
What's that?
I'm surprised that I requested we review an AR because we're only. In the policy.
Right.
So. I was just sort of asking, did I really? Ask for review JHH AR?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm a mistake on my part.
Okay.
Do we have a G?
What does J? A J. A J H H, just the policy say.
I don't know if you wanna bring it up, it's, it's been updated. Do you want to?
I'm hereby. Infesting to the state, meaning A R.
The media is not even here, Chris is gone.
Take that to the city.
Yeah, if you can bring up J H H.
It says that there are a plan. A comprehensive student suicide prevention plan for students in kindergarten through grade twelve. It outlines what the plan is supposed to contain at a minimum. But so that's J H H, it says the district shall have a plan. Um, and what the plan should include from procedures to identification. Uh. Methods to address high-risk groups. Uh, description of materials being used, supports that are culturally responsive. Process for designated staff training. And the plan will be available annually, and I, it's posted on the district website.
Oh, sneaky suspicion, and you're interested in whether it says we need to notify parents? You see parents in there, does it say that in the policy? Like.
That's part of our plan.
It's in the A R, but I, I think same, but that's what you were.
Right.
I'm interpreting what you, what your former self might have actually. I'm just assuming that's what you're looking for is the, the piece that would say. And the policy needs to address communication with parents. Right? Or, and the, and the plan needs to address. Yeah.
Fanya's printing it for us. While she's doing that, do you wanna go on to J G, student discipline? That's why you're in charge.
If you're, if you're making changes to that point too, parent is in there twice, I was, I mean, it's up to that. There's a few sentences in same parent, if you wanna add guardian twice.
Okay.
Leaving guardian and.
So J G, student discipline. Last updated in oh four, it looks like. Oh, that's.
No, I got four.
Is there a fifteen? What was linked in, was copied in here or not? You need to print that one too.
Ready to go.
Yeah.
Just have something different.
You have the updated version?
I think.
You do. I'm looking at it updated.
Yeah, this is.
Is that what they're printing on?
They're printing out J H H, now she's gonna print out J G.
What Tommy Blanchard is doing right now.
What's that? Sure.
I think he's, he's walking.
Will he be doing a West Shell?
Appreciate.
Two thousand fifteen J G policy is up there on student discipline. Gary, was there some part of that you wanted us to review?
That is the case.
Or it's right up here too, they've got, um, projected.
The, the top half is identical, I couldn't read the bottom.
No.
It's three.
Is it her or?
No, it's outside.
Thought we're getting.
Well, right there, they had. It'll come back in seven.
I think there we go. A lot longer than. But you know, when I was going to do this on our.
Daniel, when you wanted. It lists those reasons. And we just looked at a policy that also lists those things.
Yeah.
And expulsion policy.
Expulsion policy, yes, so there's redundancy there, but those two coordinated. Of course, they prefer they're in two places.
J G was incorrect because that's in our word policies, so whoever was the. Office of the superintendent twenty five, twenty fifteen didn't say the prior version as far. Let's find that person.
So when I looked on the district website, I saw this.
Yes, that, the one that, you know, the one that's projected up there is the one that's on the district website, and I'm just saying, and the one in your hand. This one is, you put the one in his hand was. Suicide.
The other thing, Gary is, uh, doesn't say, doesn't limit say. For only these. So again, there's maybe, there's maybe a need to update this based on those. Those, those. New laws or new requirements for limiting. Factors.
And if you can find a way to. Not list it two places.
Ross referenced, make sure they're correct and, and duplicated ones listed one or the other. Impossible. Well, we can do.
Well, interestingly enough, the previous versions didn't go into that kind of email, so maybe reverting to it might be appropriate. So the two thousand four that I got printed out. Kind of read okay, and then it didn't go into all the same stuff that's really. That we read early, you know, so maybe it's.
She did kind of scum off five.
We'll come back on that.
That's our reference to this.
Yeah. Cause I was.
Is that correct, we'll come back on that, on that student discipline one?
Yeah, I mean, Gary would like me to make sure it picks and ties with the expulsion one, when nothing's anything was duplicated, do we need to duplicate? Right? So that except move to the group. Is that okay, as a task?
Sure. So we'll come back to that one. Next one is J H C. Student Health Services and Requirements.
This one falls under my. I heard you, my, whatever you wanna say. Falls on your desk.
Falls on the area of responsibility.
Um, there's actually an updated versions, I mean, like the updated or the recommended one in the packet.
Student Health Services.
Not, we're bringing back. Twenty eight. The one, the sample policy right here.
Student Health Service, not in the packets. Okay, it's not in the order.
Cause the one that's on the website is twenty twenty two. No, the sample policy from O S B A that you gave me, but that is from twenty twenty two.
Thank you.
But it's not in the packet. So we would need to bring this one back with the recommendation of the updated version of it. Cause you guys don't, you don't have this one in your packet to look at. This one was updated in twenty twenty two. But we didn't have it. We chose not to update. No. We talked about it, it just didn't. So this is the one that. As I take it, this is the one that Gary wants to look at, do you want me to make copies? But what we should look at is the recommended one from O S B A. With all the O R, fully ours that are. So this is the one we should do. You can, but it has my hands, I didn't. Uh-oh. It says, yes, no, it's all, we went over. Which I don't care. What I'm gonna say to you anyway. That's fine. This is J H, the one that both members.
We wanna. Go to K A B?
Yeah.
And are we? Did we table?
It's, she's making a copy, we'll come back to it after the K A D.
J H H though, the one that was printed for, are we not?
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that.
Right now, we're on J H C. But finally, we're gonna go to the next one. Right, it's asking, I was.
Or be going back to J H H.
Yeah, now that we have a change, now that we have a copy of it.
We can go back to J H H. Yeah, we can do J H H.
Yep.
Thank you, Andrew, Gary. In suicide prevention.
This is where I was great, so the reason I brought it up is for the wording. About parent education.
Yeah. We just reviewed. What are probably talked about related to parents knowing what's going on with their child at school.
So the, the A R includes contacting the student parents, but the policy itself doesn't say that the plan must include it or shall or whatever. Is that what you go on to maybe add, something like that?
Right, I think that would be good.
That, that one of these bullets would say that. The plan shall include at a minimum, and then somewhere in there would say. Um, notification of parents. Prevention and intervention stage.
So what are we reviewing right now, are we doing the J H C?
J H H. The side.
They just made number nine where. Process for ensuring parents notify.
So we'll bring back that, uh, language, uh, to this committee and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I guess I, there's one other word on here yet, uh. We have Latin X. Which. For some of the Hispanic people that I'm acquainted with are not happy with, and if that's not required. Word. Maybe we should change that one. I don't.
Be more inclined to leave it there and include another term.
Most Hispanics don't recognize Latin X. It's either Latina or Latino, right?
So it's cultural population there.
And that's, this speaks to the date was when this was written, and that is not. A widely accepted.
Latina and Latino. So we'll come back with this policy with those two changes, okay? Um. I think we're back to the J H C, which is the one that. I have copied. Not in your packet. But Vanessa's writing on it.
So this is the, says model sample policy at the top, yeah.
Right, what I, I looked at what our current policy is and what the model sample policy is to find where we were the same and different. The, um. One through eight down at the bottom. With the exception of taking out polyotics, which we do not screen for anymore. Those are all exactly the same. The only wording in. The paragraph on our current policy that starts with in accordance to the requirements of every student succeeds act. That act is not in play right now, and so in the new one, it just says in accordance with the requirements of federal law. That's the only change there. The bigger change is at the top around nursing, and there's been some updated O A Rs around the amount of nurses that we have to have. Based on the type of student we have. And when they can delegate and what they need to be supporting with, so my recommendation. Is that we, we, I mean, we have to do the gray. But I would take out the bracketed part here. And just keep the two gray ones that are, um.
So you would take out.
They do.
One, two, and three.
Nope, keep, keep all of this, did those say where it says add? That whole thing, add this whole paragraph.
Take out the nurse.
But this bracketed one that talks about the.
Their nurse.
It's not your bracket.
Better bracket, it's not my bracket, this bracket here is just my note to myself that this whole excitement is an add. From.
I see the X that one there.
And so.
Got it.
Bracketed one that I.
Above the gray, got it.
Correct.
And why kick out the nurse part? Why?
I mean, we don't have to, we can, I guess the committee can decide to keep it, it's just. And they're not always the person that goes, that they go to for things, but they can.
So we, we have nurses on.
We have three nurses on staff. We have a nursing dependent student.
Oh, what?
Nurse dependent student, so we have to hire another nurse. My recommendation would be to bring this back to you with. It cleaned up and ready to go for her.
Yeah.
I had a question.
I was just, uh, I followed Gary's question, and I think the question was why, so I didn't, was there?
Well, why was this changed, this?
Oh, why, why?
Why take that one out?
Oh.
In particular.
It just was. This extra bracketed language that I didn't necessarily think we needed, but we can keep it in.
Brackets are option.
Yeah, brackets are option.
Right.
Unless they're gray, in which case they're not option.
It's a good percent, but it's a percent.
Debbie, you have a question too?
So, speaking of gray, uh, the first sentence, first sentence, uh. Health, student health in general, welfare is also important board responsibility, and it used to be just a concern. A major board concern. Um, is. Was there, uh, additional? Um. Legal ramifications? To jump that from concern to responsibility?
I would imagine it's due to the fact that you will have to hire people. For this part right here. And it's a. Legitarian responsibility by the board. I would imagine that's why that changed from concern to responsibility. But I don't know if I'd have to look at the OSBA.
I, I guess I'm, I'm curious and. If you could look that up and you. Are you something else, but I think.
We have, yeah, we have to look at the rationale back in twenty twenty two. But we can do that.
Thank you.
So under, um, the second, one, two, three, the sec, number two says. Training for possible vision or hearing problems and had a request in asking about dyslexia. Um, especially. In the elementary grades, and I think the answer was we escorted every year or something like that.
That doesn't, that doesn't fall under health requirements. That's a separate thing.
It was not.
There is a policy for dyslexia.
But it's not a part of, it's not.
Right.
Considered a health. An instruction.
But the shooting services.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Well, then. What possible vision problem are we talking about?
Acuity, how you see, near sighted, far sighted.
Your child needs glasses.
Child needs glasses or colored blindness.
Okay. Dyslexia is a pretty.
That was not what dyslexia was.
In fact, we're in the midst right now of what we call crazy days, which where we are screaming for. Hearing problems, vision problems, dental, all sorts of stuff, but notification goes out to the parents. And part of the second one where it says, um, there's a part here it talks about will be notified. Notification will be invited, including approximate dates during the school year when the activities are scheduled or expected. So all those notifications went out.
It's a part of the power, it's a part of registration, any registration.
I have the rationale.
Oh.
Yeah. New Oregon Administrative Rule five eight one O two one O five nine three. Requires public education providers, which include school districts, public charter schools, and education service districts. To provide information on menstrual health and must include this information in the health and sexuality education. As a result, the language has been added to board policy I G A I, human sexuality. Um, and then goes, in addition, new proposed language has been added to board policy J H C. Which refers to existing rules related to school nursing services and responsibilities. Both policies in this recommended update are highly recommended, submit to board. Consider revising on their document.
No, I think it was a good reason.
That's the one, definitely, that's it.
Also, highly recommended, not required.
Correct.
To change the language from. A major board concern to an important board responsibility. I do agree, that's a pretty significant shift in the language.
Well, on the bottom, if you look at legal references. Been trying to click it.
Oh, thank.
Um, there is one that is shaded. So that doesn't mean that it's an addition. So I would assume. But that O R S. Brings up all these changes. So, well, that's why I was clicking it.
Because the worst, worst concern kind of means it's something that we.
Is it?
Want to be responsible, is we must do this thing. It's our responsibility.
Yeah, we can look that up if you wanna, I'm sure, I mean, if that's the question or the moment.
Response for students' health engine and welfare is a. Huge. Bucket.
We add a lot of stuff into. I mean, that, you know, that's kind of a big deal.
Yeah.
Really.
We have data then, like, you know, in our demographics that says these hundred and twenty five. Students are medically fragile.
I can give you our numbers from last year.
Okay, so but it's just something that you basically have to.
We have to report to the state every year.
Okay, and you have medically complex is another one.
So medically complex. Um. It's kind of a strange definition. So medically complex says medically complex students mean students who may have an unstable health condition and may require daily professional nursing services. We have in our district, district by two hundred and sixteen students that fall into that category. For medically fragile.
So we had nine more aspiring nerds. So.
Why would people sign medically fragile means students who may have a life threatening health condition and who may require immediate professional nursing service. We have forty two. And for, we have one nursing dependent student. For our medically complex, it's those students who. Um. When I just gave you twenty six, yeah, and then we have some that are not. That are uncomplex, they call them, but maybe they're kids who self carry an inhaler or they have their diabetes well under control. They call, they fall into our medically. Non-complex students. We have one thousand one hundred and thirteen of those. That were missing reports. For four of those schools, which we didn't have to submit this to the state last year. So we didn't really, we pay more attention to the complex, fragile, independent. Make sure our numbers are in line.
This is another related.
A lot of work, you know.
A lot, and it's a lot of work for three people. That go through and create all the medical protocols for all those students. In conjunction with their families, obviously, bro.
So we, there are three nurses that are currently employed by the district.
Correct.
As opposed to the health center, which.
Correct.
Contracts, nurse practitioners and R Ns. So we do have nurses that we employ.
Correct, we have three.
And what is their roles? Sorry, I'm getting.
No, it's okay.
Farther away.
They.
I'm just curious how their roles differ than.
So our district nurses are primarily responsible for training staff in student needs, so. At depends, gone, um.
Capitalization.
All sorts of stuff and and any, any student specific who had a medical protocol. So anaphylaxis, diabetes, allergy, whatever they're, they come to us with. And the nurses set up the protocols and how does staff react when. These signs or symptoms are happening. So that's their number one function for us is that. They also go in and train our, um, delegate responsibility to our front office staff or medication administration. Um. They help with screenings, they help set up screenings with organ lines club and the dental stuff in conjunction. Or yeah, whatever it could be. So the difference between our nurses and like Cisco Health, that's like, that's like going to the doctor. Our nurses are more on the day to day function of making sure you're accessing your education and you have all the tools you need to access your education in the classroom. So double checking, working with food service or car counts for the lunches and breakfast that that are made every day. So that they can have students dialing that in for our diabetic students. So that's more, they attend our I E P meetings for students with medical issues.
If we have an outbreak of something.
They help with that.
They help with that.
Yeah. They work a lot with operations and with education.
They'll work with identity, like. It, sometimes you have a family who, um, just cannot get away from it unless they had that. I'm talking like months, you know, we can call in the nurse and maybe they can.
Build new education. We provide nice kits, those benefits to the families.
We've had seizure, seizures and anxiety issues that have gotten away. It's not a little bit in school and so, okay, let's get together. So I mean, how about this? Can be in school.
Yeah.
We rely on heavily.
They're, they're usually the ones that are actually through a release of information, talking to doctors. Uh, the parents have to sign a release of information for our nursing staff to talk to doctors to build these medical plans. They're not the ones like, oh, I fell and I, you know, scraped my knee. They're not.
I can believe this.
Yeah, they're not, send the Band-Aids on, that's our front office staff usually, but, um, they're doing a lot of the. The bigger things, plus all the collections.
And I think it's already since it's probably sixteen, eighteen years ago, we had, we had zero school nurses we contracted down at just me and county. And they would have their consult, they have a nurse donor in the school, the school, and it was better than nothing. It was, I mean, we gave them licenses, it's homes and things with them, but. Um, this is the, the students that were getting in the medical issues, just like the behavioral issues are increasingly complex. And we're trying to include everyone that wants an education. So we really rely on them.
Like, we have students in our school with eating tricks, tricks, um. Everything you can imagine, seizure disorders. They come to school, we support them.
But the, but the scrapes and the burns and ice packs and things like that are mainly happened at the health center.
Office, office. If it's a burn, maybe.
Friends pass high school.
Well, the data.
The friends pass high.
That information we collect, there was, said there was thousands.
Yeah, but that's just one school, yeah.
I get all the elementary sort of the health center.
I got you, I got you. You don't ship them over here.
No. Now, we, we have made it available for families who have been able, unable to get in to see a clinic or something and are having issues. We can refer them there, but. That's a separate entity from us.
So for policy J H C, um, it sounds like. Uh, Vanessa has some recommended changes. She'll clean this up and. And it will come forward for the first reading. Am I understanding that correct?
And can we find out that language as well as a part of that, that?
Yeah.
Was that?
Got a little note on that. See if we can find anything out.
Concern versus responsibility, absolutely.
Yeah, I look at that and think, oh, it's my responsibility. Does that mean I buy the kid glasses?
Yeah.
And it does.
We do, but not, not.
Or selectively, not individually.
Yes. Either or, give me the name of it. Last policy on the list of your last two pages in your packet, K A B, when it's right. Last adopt, last review, that was seventeen. Twenty seventeen.
So, yeah, there was the. Dead things still in force.
Yes, the elementary, elementary and secondary school act is still in force. That's what.
What was that data?
Well, it. It replaced, but. So that's when the policy passed, but S A replaced, no child left behind. Yeah, okay.
That's right in the first.
Starting of that. No child left behind. That's gone.
That's gone.
We had this A replaced.
Some child left behind that.
So, yeah. Not all. May leave one behind.
Leave a cheeky go through area.
Joe, you hanging in there okay?
Gary, you had some comments on this?
Parental rights is, uh. Kind of a, say a hot topic. I feel. And. Um. Specifically as it relates to some of the survey. Ice that we have, you know, whether. And it's off in, whether it's off out. That kind of thing. And so I suggest that which would be the policy for us to read. When it comes to covered survey items. It's, um. By a list of items down there. How many?
You actually.
Surveys. Or how many things that the district do that fall under covered survey item? I mean, I can only, the only one that I think I remember is like the youth truth survey.
We also, we give a couple of organ helping team survey, um. Is another example of the survey we give.
Is that the one that replaced living wellness?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It's only every other year or every so many years. Not the entry.
Every, every other year.
Every year.
So you're looking for more information on covered survey items?
Well, yeah, and so. Guess I'll call it is a philosophical place we're in. Children. Are. I think the word sometimes people use is naive. They haven't. Heard about certain thing. Being naive is not necessarily bad. Um. And I think enough, but few of you have heard me talk about, there used to be some old joke about the. Parents are leaving the kids at home and they said, whatever you do, don't stick peas up your nose or something like that, because when they come back home. What do the kids do? They expect. Parents hadn't said anything. Kids wouldn't even thought of that because it isn't an idea that they had in head. I'm trying to. Come to a place, I guess I'll say philosophically. That as a district, we need to exercise. More care than we have in the past. About not doing harm to students. When we try to. Help. Another student. Um. We have a vast number of programs and there are some students that are in place and their family situations that may need certain kind of teaching and instruction. From the district. But that might not be appropriate. For another student, and in fact. Could actually impact. That student. In a negative way. So. Really gonna start, I think you'll probably get more in the future, talk about it, do no harm. When we implement some of these programs. Related, this is my three minutes. So related to that, some of these surveys. Which get into the sexuality items. These kids don't even know about those things. Um, some of you may be aware that I've been kind of. Trying to get. Uh, we need not to consider their health standards to include my. Teaching about anal sex. At six and seven, three one. I don't, that's a little bit like, don't put peas up your nose.
Sort of.
Just a bunch of kids, they don't even know that. You do know, huh? So. I'm starting to think some of these surveys. Because they're trying to get information to help. These students over here, however many there are, are harming. The larger set of students over here, so. As it comes to. Things about those surveys, we should be much more careful about. Who we give those surveys to. And certainly. Raise the awareness of the parents about what those. Surveys are about. So that's my three minutes. We'll see what somebody else thinks.
I completely agree, um. Some kids are educated by these surveys and I don't think that's the intent of them. Um. And I don't think that there should be certain questions that are asked on these surveys because of that reason. So I'd love to, uh. Look a little bit more into that and into. What they, what they look like right now, whether it's the Oregon Health Survey or the Youth Truth Survey. Or there's others to make me that I'm not aware of, but I know I've read some of them in the past and I know there's options which you put on, at least you have truth. Um, the other one, I think you take it or leave it, if I understand, but I'd be curious to. To learn more about that and how we can modify. Or create an opt in. Option, because I think we've dropped the ball as a district, just based on things that I know have happened in the past, as far as parental, uh. Uh, consent or at least informing. And that's not an area we wanna. And that's not an area we want to screw this up, especially based on this E S S A act. I don't want the district to be liable for things, so that's my two cents.
Any other version of the policy you and I worked on available? K A B. Where we put it in. Parental rights.
Oh, that's. I have to shut this down to bring it up.
Do you want to show them? Is it who's on?
Jeff, were you saying that there's some surveys that were not required for Bible, we're electing as a district to deal?
I will defer to those that know that better, but my understanding is one survey is required, period. I don't know what that survey has to be.
There's a, well, we're gonna talk about it at your board workshop next week. And. There's a new law that does require us to give a couple of surveys. Details on that haven't come out since the legislative session this summer, but. I believe it's going to be the seed survey and the Oregon Healthy Teen Survey that will be required to be given. And parents do get notified, there is an opportunity to review all the questions that are asked. There's an opportunity to opt out of taking the surveys. Same thing with youth truth. We've been to and you'll hear more about youth truth next week. You'll see all the questions that are asked on youth truth, the choices that we have. As a district, you'll hear some of the history of that and how we process the. I think what Gary's talking about in terms of informing and making sure people know.
Could we make those opt in?
Um, you're going to skew the data quite a bit because you getting parents to all. Turn in the permission slip is a great struggle and. Your reliability of the data will be impacted because of that greatly.
How much? Like, I'd be interested in like, general in a given year, how many surveys are we giving? Is it required or not? And then what are we getting out of it as a district? So like in that case, we were saying excuse the data, is it is it skewing data that?
Currently, the only survey we give district wide is the youth cruise survey, through grades three through twelve and.
And how concerned are we with the data that comes out of that?
You're gonna, you're gonna see it all and a whole bunch of information is going to get shared.
So I think it's really helpful.
For your board workshop. Yes, it's very helpful and it's necessary for not as necessary for district and school improvement. It's necessary that we engage the community and ask for their input. It's necessary to listen to their voices. And hear what students, staff and parents are saying to us. So it's really valuable and has been valuable for the last six years that we've been doing it. The Oregon Healthy Teen Survey is given every other year and has been revised. You saw some data from that. At our last meeting on marijuana. Um, there are surveys given, um, the leadership class will put out a student survey. You know, what's your favorite candy bar? I mean, there are all kinds of surveys given, but the ones the district gives are the youth truth and the Oregon. Wellness survey.
And and those are to be compliant with every student succeeds. Act by fifteen, because that was those surveys are given for the whole district.
I think that it's important, the district collects when you named on what it's using for, those are funding.
Yeah, we, yeah, for the student investment account, high school success were required to get input. Where we are doing good and where we could show improvement. Sure. I think when you see the data and the questions that are asked, you'll see the pertinence of. The the survey data. But it particularly for you is true.
And they use that data to. Report.
Right, right.
And understand that we like the data, so we like.
We we need the data.
Like the data that's not. I think so. If we are. The community heard about that. We'll be covering surveys quite a bit next week. Okay, because I have some questions. I'll wait till then.
So and and real quick, I just wanted, like, I agree in principle what you're saying, Gary. I was just in a jury selection process last week. And me, the process was kind of like very informational and but also kind of a racket, like. There's a, I've learned more about some controversy and this process that kind of applied bias and all that. And then attorneys are asking questions that are kind of leading the jury towards their arguments before we get selected, right? Very, it was very interesting just how you can take questions and then kind of like, well, you know, this and that, like a lot of people are talking about it, right? And and, oh yeah, I guess, yeah, that's how it was. That's how I would look at it, you know, you. It's a lot of mind games going on in that situation. So in general, I agree with what you're saying. Asking questions is a powerful way of presenting information.
So I dabbled with this, Tony and I did, uh, last week. Because I wasn't sure where we were going with K A B, but we have been talking about parent. Uh, rights and so. What we've done there is kind of tie in those nine items, exactly ten, because the. Tenth one is in the first sentence, the board will consider parental feedback when making decisions. Uh, but then it talks about the nine items. Uh, that we've talked about previously, the parental bill of rights and just rolled them into the parent right policy. Not anything you have to do, but I thought it was a good place to house it.
You have any comments or feedback? You have suggestions?
We can add to our policies of the district. When implementing. This policy attempt to do no harm. Just so that you think about it. Numbers, just don't think about positives for doing.
And I appreciate the attempt here to incorporate some things that may have been talked about. I would want to thank all this for a little bit before. Give any feedback.
And we can play some language on doing no harm.
I I think structurally, the idea of putting it in policy makes sense that 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 is talk about, you know, making it kind of this like. Almost like board resolution or something. So this makes sense. We're going to talk about, you know. This kind of thing, putting it in policy and putting it under parental rights policy makes sense. And.
Kind of what I was thinking.
Maybe there's a. Yeah, I think just maybe a digestion period on these nine items.
So why don't we plan on seeing K A B back at the October Policy Committee meeting? And we'll dabble on some language on doing no harm to add to what we have. Committee members have suggestions on any of these, the K A B, please email them to me and I'm glad to. Word Smith, I'm going to see what we can do. And then we're bringing back. Which ones for the October Policy Committee meeting? What were the other ones? Were they J G? And. J H C. So and then we will bring to the board meeting. For the boards to consider the first two policies we looked at tonight, which were I G E H. Program exemptions and J G E expulsions.
And also I J I J A and J H A.
Right. We've come to resolute, we've come to an agreement here and we're sending those to the board for the board to vote on. At the October tenth or twelfth, what is that Tuesday? October tenth, board meeting for the board to do a first reading. Tony, I'll include those in the board packet next Friday, not this Friday, but next Friday.
Is it now in overtime to bring up anything else that might be added to future? Uh, policy meeting. So I'd like to look at our. School dress code policy. Dress code policy. Looking at it a little bit myself, I'd like for us as a room to maybe go over that a bit.
Sure. Let's make sure we invite Michelle to that meeting.
I would like to also discuss our drug education program at some point.
Uh, we have, you have a.
C number or policy.
I'll get that to you, Tony. I'll look that stuff up too.
Or do you want to break, because Gary added board reports and special concerns, is that now? Is that that?
Sound like it was if there was policy was bad, you'd like to know about.
We're got alcohol, tobacco prevention, I G. I G A E B.
Does that sound right, Joe?
You know, I'm I'm having a hard time hearing. I apologize. It's just.
Yeah, we're looking at policy I G A E B, drug, alcohol and tobacco prevention, health education.
Yep.
Okay, well, I include it. Alright, so the policy meeting portion is done. Put on back to you as board chair, six point five.
Six point five. Board reports and special concerns.
Well, I had one, since it was a workshop and. I've been sitting on it now, you know, agitating the last week. I just thinking about a comment somebody made about how much are, we spend like one point eight million on our athletic.
Uh, on. On our extra duty stipends, one point eight million for extra duty stipends.
On our extracurricular.
Yes.
And we have, we have. Also a very. Short thread word. Robust musical program. At the same time. We're trying to focus on how do we improve our graduation rates and like be on track and. Whether they can lead a third or fourth grade or something like that and. We have talked about academic return on investment. And so not that this is something I'm proposing, but. As we start the next budget cycle. What would it look like if we didn't spend one point eight million on extracurricular and instead spent one point eight million on? Third grade reading. Could we actually get a hundred percent or as close to it as? If we didn't have such a robust music program and we spent those funds on ninth grade on track, would we be? At ninety percent instead of where seventy five or. So that's just some things I wanted to throw out there in terms of. What do we? Do we really mean it on our continuous improvement program? Are we just kind of? Pushing along, last year looks the same as, I mean, next year looks the same as last year.
Might be interesting to have a board listening session from the community on that.
Yeah, I wouldn't frame it that way. I'm I'm an and guy, the genius of and, so it's more like, we know this is good, we know this is good.
Right, there's a whole lot of good things. We all resource constraint. So that's, that's a really big picture question, obviously, but but it does bring up a good point of resource allocation. What really are our highest priorities and why do we exist? And sometimes the things that we like doing aren't necessarily the most important things. So I mean. Thanks for bringing that up. It's worth thinking about. Well, we're probably, obviously, we're not going to do something drastic as getting, you know, getting rid of all extracurricular stuff. To push it all over to, you know, one of the goals, but. You know, sometimes the status quo remains the same and improvements are not made because. Organizations are not willing to make very, very hard and drastic decisions with certain things. So it it is worth talking big picture. And where are our priorities and where are our resources being allocated as well? We're thinking about. And there's there's some story about the British Army had. Four soldiers posted somewhere on the codes and. Nobody could figure out why they were there. So they finally went, they entered the archives and the records and stuff like that. They were posted there in the beginning to look for the Spanish or. After that, they decided they didn't really need to post those people out there, but it continued on for a couple of years or something. The point is you can sometimes be doing things just because they got started and. You know, those things that get started get constituents. They don't want them to go away. But you lose track of what's going to happen. It can, it can be something like. I just kind of wanted to broad brush that. Uh, to the point here, before we get to the. Start building the budget stuff. Because by the time we get to our budget stuff, then maybe it's we're pretty much set for the next.
Along those lines, I am, I'm curious. As I read more and I learn to our numbers more and I know that Oregon scores were just released and. Tim sent me an article at some point in time, but I just compared how our state has compared to other states. Uh, and the amount of effort that has been put into changing post pandemic scores. And so I'm curious how we look into things like. I read this article and says, but school districts have spent wildly varying portions of their federal money to academic, address academic deficits head on. Speaking about Oregon, uh, and unlike in states such as Tennessee, Oregon has not coordinated efforts to implement strategies. That researchers have said are the most effective at helping students catch up, including one on one or small group, high dose tutoring. Delivery during school hours multiple times a week or academically intensive summer learning programs. I know we just recently talked about summer learning programs. And targeting kids anyways, along the lines of what you're talking about. Spending resources, time and finding out what these other programs have done or are doing that have shown to be wildly successful. Where they're above pre pandemic levels or making significant strides. I'd be really interested. um, or making significant strides. I'd be really interested in what other programs are doing compared to what we're doing. And I know that's Oregon, not Transpass, not District Seven, but just very curious to me. I'd love to see what that looks like. And I don't know how much we reach out to those other states, but hey, they're doing well. Let's find out what the heck they're doing. Go there or other districts or whatever.
Have a field trip to.
Similar to Ashlyn's numbers compared to District Seven was interesting to see. Sorry, not really a report and tagging on to what you're saying.
I think ODE with the new evidence, if they would just run a model district and hit all our students up to ninety-five percent and then we could all take a look at that and be sure that's what we do. But I don't see a lot of good guidance come out of these. They seem to be all over the map.
I think you're going to see the change in ODE will be much more uh, restrictive on our spending and much more Salem made decisions than local decisions. I think you think whatever was happening under Colt as the Colt Guild Director of ODE um, is going to be the complete opposite with this new person. I think the new governor is wanting different results than the last governor did. So, which means more mandates from Salem and not fewer.
Well, maybe they should figure out how to do something right and then they can mandate it to. It helps, I mean, I'm mandated first and then try and figure out it before.
I believe the people in Salem think that local control does not work and they want much less of it. And since they're the ones spending the money, they're they're the ones that are going to call those shots. I think you're going to see this over the next three years.
People at Salem need to go read history central and people for the work or sour apples.
Maybe someday they'll realize they're not spending their money, they're spending our money.
Yeah.
They're going to solve that one this morning.
Moving on to seven point zero, future meeting day, all meetings will be held in the district boardroom beginning five, October twenty-fourth, November twenty-eighth, January twenty-third, February twenty-seventh, March nineteenth, April twenty-third and May twenty-first. Let's go home.
All right.
You want to be leading, it's, it's cold, right? Okay.
I think
Jim has his window.